All right, welcome everyone to this hybrid public meeting of January the fourth, two thousand and twenty four. It is seven oh four P M. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Hi.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
But which is being asked by the nation under indivisible delivery of justice.
Okay, before we get into the roll call, I'd like to just introduce Kathleen Gallagher as our new planning and zoning administrator.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay. We're gonna miss Bill.
We'll go on to the roll call, starting um on the right.
Dominic Smargalino, alternate commissioner.
Dominic Venetia, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Liam Ambrosi, commissioner.
Bruno Maini, commissioner.
Robert Westling, commissioner.
Nicole Lupow, alternate commissioner.
Captain Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll have general public participation. If anyone in the room or online has any questions or comments for the commissions, would be the time to do that. Please raise your hand. Anyone in the room or online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right into public hearings. First public hearing, Z C A slash R A A, two thousand and twenty three dash twelve. Commissioner Condon, do you have the notices?
Yes. In accordance with C G S eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty four, seven P M. Or soon thereafter, the hybrid Zoom meeting, and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. Uh, Z Z A R A A, two thousand and twenty three dash twelve, file number one zero three five E, two oh five Monroe Turnpike. Zoning map amendment and regulation amendment petition application to establish a special development district, S D D number six, within the Main Street Design District overlay located at two oh five Monroe Turnpike, two hundred and five Monroe Turnpike LLC owner, fully engineering LLC representative. Notice was published twice in voices on Wednesday, December twentieth and December twenty seventh.
Okay, thank you. And Kathleen, can you read the exhibits?
Exhibit one consists of applicant and site plans, uh, which includes a cover letter, regulation amendment petition application, narrative of proposed regulation amendment and zone change memorandum to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, which includes parking support information, special development district number six, statement of use and standards for the Town Line Plaza, two oh five Monroe Turnpike, site civil drawings for self-storage at Town Line Plaza, prepared by solely engineering, and architectural drawings by S W G Architectural and Design. Exhibit two includes the municipal referral, uh, by the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning, uh, dated January third, two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you, Kathleen. And for the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. Uh, my company is Kevin Solely, my licensed professional in the state of Connecticut with sole engineering. Obviously, I don't want to be intrigued. First, I'd like to wish y'all a happy new year, first meeting of the new year. Exciting for two thousand and twenty four planning and zoning business. Um, I also just for record keeping purposes, I have the green cards for the proof of mail. And for tonight's hearing. So, um, can we put the computer? Excellent. First try, that's good. Um, so, uh, as ready for the record, um, we're here tonight to talk about both regulation memo application and zone change to create a special development district number six. Um, all right, everyone, so this site is located, uh, just north of the Town Line, uh, Tremble. Curse for here, so this is the mountain. Um, we're just north of that on the west side of, uh, one eleven. It's a somewhat recent area. Um, so the site's two oh five Monroe Turn, Monroe Turnpike, um, Noble Gas, uh, which is, uh, in this location here, and Panera Bread. Um, those were all, uh, the first two constructed spaces of project, which is known as Town Line Plaza. Um, this is an overall area depicting the Noble, uh, Panera Bread. It's previously approved and currently under construction, Baldi Supermarket. Happy to give an update, that project obviously is moving forward. Construction, um, it's expected to be all the sometime in the early spring and hopefully it will be in summer, uh, next year. So. About that. Um, so, uh, previously approved on that site was, um, the, the Noble, Panera, Baldi, and then a, we identified a medical office building, um, on the south, uh, easterly side of the site in this location here. Um, the outcome to the fore you is to create a special development district, um, to allow for, uh, that component of the project to be replaced with a self-storage user, um, based on market demands and, uh, you know, the strength of that as a, as an asset class. Um, or we should, we should, we should commission consider, uh, granting this, this, right, you know, tonight, allow for us to communicate for next step, which is a formal cyclone application and to bring the project through the wetlands commission, um, for a self-storage user. Uh, I believe we've previously met with the subcommittee and discussed this as a concept, and it was well received, which is why we're here tonight. Um, so, uh, this is the first step in making this a reality. Um, we have this regulation amendment, which brings the special development district language. Um, up on the screen here is our proposed narrative and language associated with that. So, uh, we'll just run through this quickly. You know, we established what the district is. Um, we talked about the regulations, uh, the requirements, and then we established that from a community standpoint, that self-storage would be a permitted use, um, within this, and we created some, some protection measure there too. Again, sure, there's three or four from, uh, the part of the line. Yeah, can you hold on a second? Sure. Yeah, somebody's like, I think it's Mike's. That would be, yeah, he's the only one not muted. May you do it. There we go. Um, so with this, we established the assistance system with the previous special, uh, commission. We established some, uh, climate climates associated with it, we built in protection, uh, we consistently out these applications that we need to perform. Um, establish, you know, when the bold climate is, uh, when you're fronted required, um, the max number of stories for this region proposing to be four stories. Um, max building height would be capped at forty five feet, which is consistent with, uh, other uses and similar, uh, elements can, which consider the past. Um, minimum setbacks at district limits, we maintain fifty. So, we're here, um, it's a residential zone, okay, that was something that was always very, uh, a point, a point that we certainly got, we thought basically would, you know, as part of this application. Um, but we covered for maintain what's allowed in the underlying zone. We also established some self, some parking requirements for the various uses, the self-storage, the grocery, and the fast food, um, consistently bullets previously approved. And we actually provided as part of this application, a, uh, parking, um, generation memorandum, which was prepared based on similar uses and similar operations and other, uh, patients to establish what that actual parking needs is based on empirical data. Um, so we referenced the other components of the S D D language are consistent with how the commission has granted these rules in the past, establishing development plan, solar management, landscape maintenance, um, et cetera. The, uh, again, this is just a blow up of those permitted uses that I, that I ran through. So again, um, so back to our overall plan, so this plan provides for the self-storage use. Um, and establishes a total twenty one parking spaces. This would actually be, um, the, the plan that's before you include in our application. We have our overall site plan, um, our, uh, grading drainage plan, and our utility plan, and a landscape plan. And it's required as part of the special development district regulations. Um, while our, uh, our special development district language allows for four stories, which is actually designed here and will, will be consistent with the, with the formal application. It establishes that actually only three stories of the proposed building. Um, so you would come into the site off of, uh, the Turnpike. This would be essentially the, uh, second story. There'd be two stories above this, and then you'd have a lower basement elevation here. But, you know, technically, it doesn't make that a fourth story. So, so while we said a four stories, it's actually only going to max building height of forty five feet. The, uh, you know, as I said, we included a utility plan, again, as part of the construction of the Aldi. We were previously subbing utilities to the edge of their development area, and that would just be picked up as part of this proposed development. Um, we, you know, included a real landscape plan, um, and it complies with all required landscape buckle requirements. And it really actually enhances some of the landscaping that was previously included for that, uh, medical office building. Um, uh, we've included, we have the design review for the potential building. Um, I think it's actually very aesthetically pleasing building. Um, this is actually would be the, the facade that would face the Aldis, which would see from the Aldi parking lot. Um, we'll see, yes, it's still perspective, hopefully, uh, in another corner of the parking lot. Uh, and then here's the actual elevations with the, um, with the designer view commission. Um, one item to note is that, so this is actually the facade that would face, uh, Monroe Turnpike. And if you can see, there's kind of making that transition grade along that facade, and we would just have a small loading door that actually face, uh, Monroe Turnpike. Um, and we know that there's been some, and then this is the elevation to, uh, the south is the elevation to the north. And again, you actually only see those, those three stories, um, above that finish grade. You've included the floor plans as part of our submission, just for the kind of commission's, um, understanding. Um, uh, you know, one, one question that was, or a comment that was raised as part of the discussions with staff, you know, had to do with really what the potential, you know, visual impact of this building would be. So we did prepare a section kind of coming from, um, Monroe Turnpike. You know, there's a, a long Monroe Turnpike here, you know, Noble Gas is here, to the south is D R Charles. Um, and this is pretty much well developed, but there may be a very small window where you may be able to see through this, but you can actually see that because of the vegetation, you'd only see the very top portion of the building. Um, and I wanted to just kind of highlight, what you'd actually only be able to see really is this from, um, from, uh, Monroe Turnpike, and it really won't be in a really narrow window where there's kind of gap in vegetation and things like that. Um, and the other structures that are there. So, um, this is really all you would see, we believe, from visual impact from, um, Monroe Turnpike. It's really kind of from this way. So, um, you know, with that, uh, you know, as I mentioned, um, this is really the first step of the commission doing this favorably. We'll, we'll proceed with formal applications of the new wetlands commission for the modifications to the site, how make this used. And then we'll be back before you for the, uh, formal site plan approval for the specific use. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Do you want to start with Dominic?
Sure. Uh, will there be any employees on site, um, day to day?
Yes, there would, it would be in a, uh, there would be an employee in the office during, during, so.
Let's tell the questions out for now.
So how many stories is it gonna make?
So it's, um, it's, it's three stories from grade on the main elevation with Baldi. This driveway would essentially ramp down to, uh, uh, you can almost call it the basement level. Um, but from this grade, it would be four stories, but it's only a narrow portion of the actual building facade would actually depict the whole four stories. And one thing we wanted to make sure is, and we maintain was the principal buildings on the forty five feet. And, you know, based on how, um, the height is calculated, it's based on average grade ten feet from the building. So, you know, it doesn't have that visual impact, um, you know, that we're proposing, you know, four, four stories out of the ground. We're able to kind of bury one based on, you know, geography, you know, building into the land.
And any chance you can do some, something to break up the square roof, like slopes or even some sort of facade, makes it a little more New Englandy?
Um, you know, I mean, we could certainly look at it. One of the, you know, one of the things is you measure building height, it comes back on, it's on like the roof. So as you change the, the, the roof structure and pitch, that height they changed, so we wanted to kind of keep the overall.
Sorry, like some of the fake, like the fake ones in front of McDonald's, right? They kind of have like the thing at the front, at the top. Uh, it doesn't add height, but it's out on front, but it kind of comes out a little to make it look a little more, I don't know, something like that to consider. That's all.
We could certainly take that back, and I think that's something we could actually, you know, more formally address as part of the site plan process.
Name plan, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Um, so you want to create a new part of this, just want to make it six, S B D six?
Yes, so we're, this application is to create special development district six, which would allow the self-storage as a, as a permitted use. Uh, it's property.
And then you have any kind of setbacks for this thing?
We maintain all the same setbacks for the underlying zone.
So you didn't create like self-storage as a road or anything like that?
Well, we, we did keep it three hundred feet off.
But I know this property, I'm talking about future properties.
Well, future properties, again, especially development districts from like a planning tool standpoint are on a case by case basis.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really create any precedent that the commission should make.
And what we saw is a suburb may have issue with it way in the back.
Right.
So what about what's behind it?
So this to the, to the rear is a, um, it's actually a commercial piece of property, or the aerial, it's accessed off of, uh, if it's technology or Commerce Drive. So, um, to the south, and it's kind of right off the aerial. Um, can't see it in here, but there's, um, uh, there's medical office development to the south.
Yeah, I got that.
Road that comes through there, and that actually is tied to a larger parcel.
There's no residential back there.
Uh, there's residential to, uh, this side. Um, but we, yeah, but we maintain that, those same buffers that were included as part of the disapproval.
Right.
The maxes? That's it.
Just behind it, though.
Hey, so what's the height that you can see from there?
Residential. It'd only be three stories above.
Great. Be able to see the whole three stories?
Uh, well, no, actually, we have a pretty, since we're in the bubble, talk about, we're out there, and we're set down lower in elevation.
Right, just want to say, what's your elevation compared to ours?
So.
Try to look at it.
Who are you talking to? So. I'll think. So the elevation here.
Just don't answer yourself, and people won't get crazy.
Is approximately four.
What is this?
Four sixty. Um, actually, no, let's, let's say four sixty three. We're actually at four fifty nine. So this is, this is higher than grade, um, than we are, and obviously lower elevation from there.
So it's fourteen feet, you're saying? What, four fifty three?
We're four fifty nine.
And what are they?
Four sixty three, four feet.
Still shorter than that big barn.
You can see that bad boy from.
I see him.
So with the landscaping and everything like that, how much of that building are they gonna see?
We, we don't expect much, especially from the surrounding, you know, because again, if you look at this area, it's a little bit, obviously, uh, screen beyond, but this is fully vegetated and wooded, and we're re-establishing some vegetation around that same.
That's all I was worried about, Mike, like, right, so let's go a little bit north, England, like, do you see that building? That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Where are you putting the, uh, where are your plans currently to put the mechanicals?
Uh, they would be, they would be on the roof. Um, we don't have to progress a roof plan, but there is just like parapet walk tube as well.
So you gotta take that into consideration too, when you, if you decide to change.
The architectures.
The architectures.
Those are going on there. We gotta cover those.
Yes.
Uh, when you came to subcommittee, actually, you didn't come to subcommittee.
You had a staff member come to subcommittee. He said he was gonna get us pictures from the Panera looking at the property.
Right.
Not from, not from the road where you did your little thingy.
Yeah. So we can certainly provide that. I understand, so you want to see kind of from here. Where, yeah, we can, we can prepare, we can prepare that. Um, and I certainly think that's something we could, we could show as part of the, the next step, or we can certainly prepare that and give that depiction.
Because that'll give.
I, I, I mean, in my head, I kind of see how it's gonna look, but I think it would give us a clearer view when you pull into the property with the Aldis and all that kind of stuff there. Um.
Now, just to give some, some context, so Panera, the driveway at Panera is at elevation four fifty. Um, almost the elevation.
By the top.
Here is approximately four fifty. The Panera is actually at four sixty, so this driveway kind of ramps up. Um, and again, this is about.
Isn't that Aldis?
This is Aldi, yes.
Yeah.
And that's up at, uh, four sixty. What did I say? This is Panera. So this is actually about ten feet higher in grade than, than, you know, this intersection.
But when, when you take that turn to that first tree right there, that's what I want to see.
Okay, we can certainly provide that.
Because I don't think you're gonna see much from the Panera.
I, I, I wouldn't expect to either.
I mean, what are you gonna see? You got an Aldis in the way, and you got a bunch of vegetation, or trees, O'Reilly's is gonna be in the way too. Coming, coming down, if you're coming down one eleven, lucky.
Talking about when you're in the property.
Yeah, but I just mean the view from while.
Yeah.
True. Everything else in the way.
True, 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 true. I'm good.
What's the lighting gonna look like, and what is the timing as far as the lighting being on and off?
So, um, the lights would obviously be, you know, designed to be consistent with the rest of the center. So it would all, all have all L E D fixtures, recessed lights. Um, there would be some, uh, you know, obviously building mounted lights, really just to kind of meet those minimum safety requirements. Um, but again, it's not expected to be, you know, man, twenty four hours or twenty four hours. This would actually be gated, so there would be security in place, where, you know, if you were kind of coming to come down here, there'd be a gate to, to, you know, so that only people with the access could get down there.
One or seventy.
Typically, yeah, from the operation standpoint, they want to make it, make it open, but there'd be, but you know, we'd have that security built in.
So is that whole thing gonna be gated? Because right now, you have a bunch of access points through the parking lot.
No, just, just from here.
To get to the back.
To get to the lower elevation, right.
Sorry, that's all right. So is it all gonna be gated or not?
Not, not all of it, I think, just to get to that lower elevation.
Okay.
Um.
And why gated? And I mean, I, well, yeah, I mean, I don't understand why you'd gate one entrance, but, um, how many units are gonna be in there? And what is the square footage of the units approximately?
Sure. So. Oh, I'm speaking, sure.
Um, there's a chart on the S G W architectural drawings.
Yeah.
Um, that has the total units at seven hundred and forty five.
Here we have two hundred. So a total of, uh, yeah, uh, seven hundred and forty five units. And they, yeah, they, they range in square footage from twenty five to three hundred square feet. Twenty five would be the smallest, the five by five, and then go all the way up to a ten by third.
And this is gonna be typical storage, no like automobiles or anything like that?
No, typical, you know, I mean, this is a climate controlled, you know, secure facility, so, um, yeah, it would be, you know, I mean, I'd take pretty much anything you want, but, um, you know, I don't even think it, it's not for all of us, it's really hard to conventional self.
And how many parking places?
So we have twenty one, and part of our, our submission included a, a, you know, heartland study, like, and discussed, um, you know, empirical data that we were able to get from some other facilities. Um, so we looked at, uh, five different facilities, one in West Hempstead, New York, one in Massapequah, New York, one in East Rockaway, New York, one in Valley Stream, New York, one in Plano, New York. And these were from, um, an operator who was, we had operated a facility, and we looked at their peak parking demand over peak hours. And they were actually, the demand is actually very little, went from six to nine spaces total over those peak hour periods. Um, we also looked at, um, so that's a, that's a, you know, that's a supply rate of, you know, one per six thousand square feet or so. We also looked at the I T parking generation manual, which has a similar established empirical data, it's point one per thousand square feet. Um, so our proposal of point one seven spaces per thousand square feet is more than adequate to satisfy the, the demand experience between the, the specific facilities that we, we studied and the I T data.
Okay, I mean, you know, by no means have I conducted a market analysis on any of this, but, you know, I feel like we've been inundated with interest and applications on self-storage in town, you're probably aware of that. So that is something that's on our, on our mind or on my mind anyway. You know, every time we turn around, there's somebody else trying to put self-storage in there. And I feel like there's a possibility that the market is going to become oversaturated. And then what do we do with buildings that are left around and we don't have anything to do with them? So what, what are your thoughts on, on?
So I'll, I'll say this, um, I, I agree with you. So, so, uh, regionally, nationally, self-storage is a very popular use, and it has been for the past few years. Um, from like a market study standpoint, um, it's amazing to me, but they look at, they look at these uses, it's roughly seven square feet per person within a specific radius, um, as like a national average for what they need. I know that this market is around three square feet per, uh, per person from that ratio. So, um, I know that a number of people are very interested in the market because of the high demand. I will say that I think it's really gonna be a race to construction. And I do not believe that while all the, you know, I know there's been a few applications for the commission, I don't believe that will all be actually built. I think the first person in the ground is likely gonna be the only larger scale facility that, that comes to the market. And I think operators are wary of that. Um, but I think so, so it's really more gonna be a speed to market. I'll say that I don't think that, um, if a facility like this is constructed, I don't necessarily think it would be viable, even if you're closer to or at that cap, it would just take much longer to, um, be filled. So the, the, you know, the absorption of those units into the market would just take a little while, but I, but I, I, you know, personally, anecdotally, I don't think that they will all be constructed. I think likely one, um, will go, and then, you know, most likely is, you know, anything else that was, that's proven, will likely have to come back to be something different.
I agree. I mean, typically, these applications, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but they don't all come to fruition. But in the unlikely event that they did, I'd be concerned that we'd have, uh, you know, a, a ton of self-storage facilities that, you know, would be, would be too many, then, you know, next thing you know, we don't have, you know, we have tons of vacancies. So that's my only concern, because there are all these applications or these ideas have come to us all at one time.
Yeah.
So we'll have to take that into consideration, but, you know, I totally understand your analysis on this, and I appreciate the answer. Thanks.
No questions, but what I have heard in, in the market wise, is not just local people that are renting these, they're coming from downtown county, and they come up based on price. So they may live in West Quarter Greenwich, filter it for once or twice a year if it's at the right price.
Right.
So that's where the market, it might not just be Monroe Tremble people using it, it's people out of the area that are coming.
I have a question first. Thanks. So right now, I, from what I can think of, we have three, right? I believe there's one on, uh, Main Street that was approved. Um, well, there, excuse me, there's one on Stevenson, which was.
There's one on Stevenson, one on Pepper Street.
And then we have one twenty five.
Right.
Right, and then you're gonna, this one is a potential. But also in subcommittee, there was one talked about at Taylor Rental.
Yep, I believe that, I, that may actually be on the agenda as a received application that you'll be seeing future. Okay. And then there was also one discussed at, um, Mr. Carp's property on twenty five, that Tremble, that special development district was approved, that's what I mentioned, so. Potentially, that's six. I'll, I'll say from a, from a market analysis standpoint, from an underwriting standpoint, I think it'd be highly unlikely that they all be actually constructed. I think it's more willing to set us to market. I think the first one that commences is likely gonna be the one that prevails.
You have what you can store into those buildings, like what people could store there?
Um, uh, I'm not, I, I, I don't have that answer. Um, I don't, I know, you know, I, I'm not sure. I, I, I'm sure each operator is gonna have, you know, is going to, um, have established policies, procedures, and things that, and it's happening.
As part of our.
Bye bye.
Thing is part of our reg. Thing is part of our regulations that we should. Something wants to be stored there or can't be stored. I think that would be part of looking into our regulations because we don't want chemicals there. We don't want gasoline there.
No, I think there is a restriction on some of the things they could put in there. I I I I'm sure, I'm sure they're all.
These storage facilities themselves have.
Yeah.
But like I've seen, but it all depends on who runs that storage facility. I'm saying that.
No, you're a hundred percent right.
On the one eleven deal.
We did, or twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So that would be part of, I would want that part of this, what we can have.
Yeah, I think that's something that would be, and I think we talked about.
Things and shit like that. No, I know that.
It's something that gets.
Kevin, do you know what the occupancy is on the one eleven deal? Like, that's recently been built down in Stevenson.
I don't. I'm not aware of that.
I don't, I don't think that ever been. I don't really think that was ever built. I haven't been down that.
You should drive down one eleven every once in a while. Go visit, go visit your friends down there.
Uh, I, I know the trouble self-storage on Spring Hill Road, which is kind of right, he's full, he's full. I know that he refers people down to Stevenson a lot. I know Stevenson refers some people over to him. I think there's a, there's a constant waiting list for those facilities that have those override doors. I think the one different about the ones recently that's come before this commission are they climate controlled. They're not the old traditional you know, outside doors around the perimeter. They're a little bit of a nicer, different product.
Will this one have any drive-up units?
Uh, actually, uh, I don't believe so.
What is happening?
So they have actual garage doors, you can drive your vehicle in, back your boat in, you can.
Yeah, this one actually would not have any drive-up. Elevators. Yes, there'd be uh, multiple elevators.
Okay, Kathleen, can we get your input on this?
Absolutely. Um, so just a couple of small things. Um, the applicant should clarify, and I apologize, I don't have a memo issued out as I'm still on my first second week of.
Don't apologize.
Of employment. Um, the parking calculations is stated to be per square foot. I believe it should be per gross floor area. I believe that's would just be language that would be more in tune with the rest of uh, the zoning code, and I do believe that's the intention of what you're trying to say. Um, the site plan shows two loading spaces. Um, I do not believe that two loading spaces uh, meets the requirement of the uh, non-residential use for loading spaces for the code. So if you are only proposing to put two, I would either update the text amendment or uh, change the conceptual site plans to make sure we go, don't get into an issue.
How many would they need based on seven hundred and forty-five units?
It's based on gross floor area, so it's like four or five.
Yeah, you better off change the plans, but we'll change the text.
Um, just for use for the commission, the underlying district is the limited office retail district. This has already been addressed. But the lot requirements are basically the same from one to the other, with the exception of the building height, which was disclosed. Um, then instead of two and a half stories, it's four stories, and instead of thirty-five feet, it is forty-five feet. Um, some of this was already reviewed, but as we talk about building height, as it was mentioned, it talks about the average grade of the building height. So for a flat roof, it's taken from that top elevation to the average grade, which means in that southwestern corner of the property, it is more than forty-five feet. It is more than the forty-three feet they've located at the building height. Because they're taking the average grade around the entire site. So I would just look at, you know, of that area, you could see on that elevation, it came down. Um, just really what's the impacts of allowing a forty-five foot building height.
Does that include mechanicals at height?
No, no, it's just to specific parts of the roof. And as was mentioned, once you start making it a sloped roof, um, they take it from the mean elevation of the slope roof between the eve and the ridge. So as you start to change that roof height, it is gonna change their um, their elevations um, height because it's taken from a specific point, but no, it does not include mechanicals. Now, from an aesthetic perspective, you know, you can think about, you know, how that parapet or other things can change, um, but that's at the, at the purview of the commission. Um, and as was already mentioned, the site plans are not being reviewed in detail. They've only been reviewed as it relates to the zoning text amendments. Um, they do understand that they will have to come in for a modification to the uh, previously approved S E P as well as to the wetland commission. And that is my review.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any of the other commission, any commissioners have any other questions before we go to the public? If not, then I want to hand it over to uh, Bruno um, to run the public portion of the meeting, since I can't see who's there.
Uh, I can't see who's online. Can you, actually, we'll go to the public first. Anybody here in public that want to speak on behalf? In favor, against this? Nope, no one here. And anybody online? All yours, nobody neither.
Good job, Bruno.
Thanks, bud.
All right, then.
I learn from the best.
Back to the applicant.
Brian, you're the best. That's you.
So, um, yeah, the the uh, uh, you're totally correct, uh, uh, Kathleen, regarding the gross square, actually, our conclusion of our study actually does say gross square area. So I think that was just the uh, you know, scrivers error on that. And so fully agree with that. Um, actually, regarding the loading spaces, I think we could certainly strike to provide those four spaces that are provided without actually impacting the site plan in a meaningful way, because I think we actually have more. Alright, so I, I know we can satisfy that as well. Um, you know, I think uh, I you know, unless there's any other questions from the commission, I think that um, you know, again, we believe that this from special development district standpoint, regulation amendment, zone change, we think this is the appropriate planning tool. Um, and again, as as been stated, you know, this is just a step. This group would be back before the commission would hold application to modify the previously approved plans and to go through the development process.
Okay, did you want to close this hearing? Do we have other material that we need to see?
Um, I think we can provide, I think the items discussed could be provided as part of a next step if the commission feels favorable about the concept.
In full disclosure, we were a little late at noticing um, Metro Cog of this because the property is within five hundred feet of the Town of Trumbull line. And technically, their referral comment would be another exhibit that would need to be entered into the record during the public hearing process. In order to be able to be used to make a determination, um, the board cannot accept additional exhibits or information after the public hearing is closed. Once you start making your deliberations, it has to only be on the information that was submitted during the public hearing process. So we would ask that we do keep it open for one more meeting only to get that information.
Exactly, yeah, leave it open. So we gotta leave it open?
Leave it open.
All right, then we'll leave this open and uh, we'll move on to the next public hearing. Thank you. Second public hearing for tonight is the subdivision. S U B twenty twenty-three dash oh four, one twenty-seven Main Street. Um, Commissioner Conian, you have the, I, wait a minute, I don't think we have uh, is that noticed?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I got it. Uh, in accordance with CGS eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, January fourth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M or soon thereafter via hybrids meeting and in-person attendees located in Monroe Town Hall. S U B twenty twenty-three zero four, file one two seven three C, one twenty-seven Main Street subdivision application free map. And then, or proposed subdivision at one twenty-seven Main Street, accessory map, zero one two lot nine. Pondview LLC owner, solely engineer LLC representative, notice was published in voices twice on Wednesday, December twentieth and Wednesday, December twenty-seventh.
Kathleen, do you have the exhibit list?
The exhibit number one is the application and plan set, which includes the cover letter, subdivision and resubmission application dated November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, property owners' drawings for Pondview subdivision prepared by Solely Engineering dated November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Including a land survey by Accurate Land Serving dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, exhibit two includes a uh, determination letter from the Town and Monroe Inland and Wetland Commission. Um, exhibit three is the comment letter from the town engineer James Deneo uh, dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Kathleen, and for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. The director, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a. So um, we're here today to talk about a subdivision application for one twenty-seven uh, entry. Uh, this is the Pondview development. Since application was uh, subject of, this is by this commission uh, previously. For a multifamily um, uh, complex, apartment complex, uh, with a ninety-six years, uh, spread over eight buildings and a, of a highly amenitized clubhouse. Um, as part of that previous application, we had initially, we had presented a number of items to the commission, and this was approved as part of actually special development district number one. Um, as part of those previous approvals, we identified and provided um, plans which depicted um, some eventual condominium um, layout, which essentially would create each building unit to be a condominium. Now, it's because initial this, see from the Department of Public Health, said that that would be the best way for them to see it from a patient standpoint, would be the condominium by each building and septic system as its condominium unit. Um, after we received approvals, we went to perfect and finish those permits, and they actually said and suggested and requested that we actually go through a process to formally subdivide these product properties, so they weren't part of a a commercial condominium, but were subdivided with fees with, so each each building and septic system set on its own fee simple. Um, we came back to this commission, we discussed this, we modified um, regulations and the uh, special development district regulations and subdivision regulations to allow for that subdivision to move forward. And this application is simply the um, uh, completion of that step. So uh, what we've provided and proposed is to subdivide the property into, uh, as depicted here. This complies with the um, zoning regulations, special development district regulations, and the town subdivision regulations. It has gone through a referral process with the inland wetlands commission, and this would result in the overall development um, be comprised of the parcels identified, and each building and septic system would be on its own fee simple lot. This is basically a request from the Department of Public Health, is how they want to administer the permitting for this project as 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 provided and discussed with them. Um, so again, this application is a little unique because it's subdivision, it does not propose any physical work. All of the work associated with this project has been previously reviewed and approved. This simply creates um, lots uh, to be fee simple lots rather than um, condominiums. Um, as part of this, one element that, you know, we've been discussing with staff, um, we expect this to stay open because we want to provide uh, in addition to the subdivision plan, a formal declaration would be filed on the land records as part of this process, which would establish um, overall uh, maintenance obligations, um, uh, cost sharings for snow removal landscaping, cross-access easements of parking and things like that. Um, which is typical with what you'd find in a lot of, say, shopping centers without parcels along the front. Though that type of declaration would be filed where there's common area that's that benefits the overall property, and it establishes the parameters on how those things would be maintained, um, you know, in perpetuity. So that is something that we want to provide to staff to make sure that they're comfortable with that in advance of closing the hearing, so we we assume the hearing will stay open. Um, but again, so we can provide that additional information, and we did provide some, you know, this depicts, you know, water line and water lines instead of being established. Um, electric, uh, you know, electric service, utilities, um, access easements and parking easements, those are all kind of time. Um, but ultimately, again, the project is previously approved, it is not changed as part of this, we're not. Worth, it's simply the subdivision, it's the separate fee simple parcels in accordance with the regulations. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any question, questions the commission may have.
Well, all right, let's start with Dominic again.
Um, since they're separate parcels, does that mean one one could be sold to a different owner?
Theoretically, yes, it could. However, the 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 declaration that would be, that would be filed on the land records as part of subdivision creates obligations to that parcel that go back to the bounds of the of of the center. Um, what'll likely happen is the parcel that includes the clubhouse as the, you know, the the, you know, the main amenity building. Um, you know, that'll kind of be the parent where the other uh, owners will contribute to the color of the overall maintenance of the stormwater system. Parking lot and the snow removal and things like that. But yes, in theory, it could be sold, even if it was condominiumized, technically it could have been sold. But but the, there will be protection measures in place and established on the land records that'll run with all of these parcels.
Apparently, there's just one owner.
Correct, but it was, yes, correct.
That's all I have.
Any additional impact to the town as far as tax taxation or anything like that?
No, this doesn't change anything from what was previously.
Um, because you're subdividing, do you have to do open space?
We do, and actually, included in the subdivision plan, we are providing the established open space, and we're actually ready for conservation easements. There are other properties before, um, which is being uh, included as part of that open space. So this does include open space dedication. Where? So it's actually hatched along. All through here, and then all through here.
Is that wetlands though?
Some of, some of it is, but we actually do comply with the, with the requirements.
Just right.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's where all the fish are.
Yeah, good to know. All right, thanks.
Yeah, all I was worried about was the easement, so you're gonna take care of all that, right?
Right.
That's all I was.
No questions.
Concerning declarations, uh, septic maintenance is going to be key, is gonna be one of the larger expenses concerning the the property overall as this area of land is historically does not leach well, being so close to the aquatic river. So I would just make sure that we, you know, outline that properly, and there's other subdivisions in town that, you know, have not done as good of a job. So we're gonna be wanting to keep an eye on that, especially in this area.
I I will say, actually, this site probably has the best septic sand naturally occurring. In the area outside, that was, that was obviously mined, or not mined, but removed from a rock standpoint. The soil is through here and along here are probably the best septic sands that I've seen in town. Um, and that's something obviously that's highly supervised by the Department of.
Is that where the fields are gonna be?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, we're putting it in the most open spot.
Yeah.
I think that's been discussed at length regarding this type of development. This is really only the only locations in town that actually has the 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 uh, suitable soils to accommodate this type of project.
Correct, but in the event that it it doesn't accept the uh, the water, you know, and it it runs off, it obviously goes into the river, so. Now, uh, you know, presuming that we, you know, we have a favorable approval here, which sure we will, um, when does construction begin?
So this, this is, we need this perfected so we can go back and finalize the program with the Department of Public Health, and then it would be commenced this year.
Okay. No question.
Kathleen, did we cover your comments, or do you want to go ahead with more?
Uh, just a couple notes. I just want to read for the public record that the inland and wetland commission um, requested that the planning and zoning commission pay particular attention to the maintenance responsibilities of the development with respect to the detention pond. Um, so in addition to the utility easements, they also, you know, just want to make sure that central pond is included in that. Uh, the town engineer did create a memo, and it was mostly focused on many of the same things that was already discussed. Um, how does maintenance uh, being handled for drive aisles, parking spaces, uh, the parking garages? Considering some of the parking garages are on one lot that are going to service residents that are going to be in a different building. Um, the zoning table should be updated to include impervious surface and building coverage. Right now, that's look, that's noted as N A for both of those. So just to make sure that that continues to be in compliance as it's subdivided. Um, parking easements that we've already talked about, you know, having shared parking uh, on the project. Just making sure that's covered in whatever maintenance agreement is there, an access agreement. Um, just whose responsibility for accessory buildings and. just whose responsibility for accessory buildings and things of that nature. So I assume all of that's going to be connected in.
Yes.
The, the big confusion is if it's all owned by the same owner, you know, it's hard to have an easement in favor of one lot to another if it's all the same owners. But you also have to make sure that it's into consideration because, uh, what if one were to be sold? You want to make sure that, you know, whatever easements and maintenance are required for this lot is transferable in case that happens.
I mean, is that something that we've had experience outlining in the past? If, if one unit is to be sold, how does that get handled?
Well, yeah, certainly, because like, it's really going to operate very consistently as like a commercial shopping center without parcels that go along the front, right? You'll have a, a shopping center owner who will have, you know, out parcel, you know, McDonald's next to a Wendy's, you know, anchored by a Walmart, right? Each of those individual buildings, they all contribute to, uh, 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 a common area maintenance fund, which covers insurance and snow removal and all those things. And every time one of those parcels is, is sold, those requirements and restrictions run with that deed, and they are a part of that declaration. So that's, that, it's very common, um, so.
Know what they're getting involved in.
Exactly, yes.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, back to Commissioner Mayne. Could you run the public participation portion of this hearing?
Absolutely. Anybody from the live audience that would like to speak on behalf of this application? Nobody?
Anybody online? Back to you, Mike. Good work.
Thanks, bud.
To, uh, uh, back to Kevin Solely.
I'm telling.
I'm telling. Excellent job.
I am. Sure.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I think, again, uh, as, as I stated, we want to be able to provide that additional information to satisfy staff, part of the declaration. Um, we'll do that. Request to have the hearings stay open, and we hope to be back before you in two weeks.
All right.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thanks. We'll keep the hearing open and, uh, we'll move on. Now, there are no deliberations or determinations tonight. Um, but we do have pending minute, minute, pending meeting minutes.
There we go.
Seven.
Yeah, we got all.
I think there are a bunch of them.
I know there are a bunch of them.
Mike, what about all the new applications?
Not that I know of.
No.
Sorry.
Let's do the meeting minutes first. We've got like thirty.
Yeah, let's get them, because that's been heavy on.
It's not going on.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October fifth, twenty twenty-three as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving along.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as drafted.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes, next.
Make a motion to approve meeting minutes, November second, twenty twenty-three as drafted.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on.
I'll make a motion to approve November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes as drafted.
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
And next?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-three as drafted.
Second.
Uh, if there's any discussion at any point, just go ahead and.
Ah, they were great. Well done.
These are my favorite ones, actually.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Are we on our minutes?
That's it.
That's it.
Current.
Good work.
That was our last meter, yeah. We didn't have a second. So we're current on the minute.
All current.
Yeah, we are current. Okay, back to new applications. So there are, um, there's one new application listed on the, um, agenda tonight. S D P twenty twenty-four dash oh one, five fifteen, five seventeen Main Street. Um, Kathleen, are you familiar with that?
Ruckus.
I have not had a chance to review them. I've done some preliminary view, but not enough to have, um, comment.
Okay. Uh, well, I don't know if that's on the eighteenth agenda or not. Is it?
Yeah, it's for a public hearing for one eighteen.
Send to the secretary for all of us to share.
Sorry.
Uh, Leon was talking.
Any other comments or on the new applications? I think, um, the packet is online.
I do not believe it is, unless it was put up this afternoon. Last time I had checked, I'm gonna check right now. Eighteen.
Right. Well, what is it?
Six oh four is the only packet that's online, which is the third in the new applications, the five fifteen, five seventeen Main Street. Um, both the zoning boundary change and the site development plan have not been put online yet. Um, I believe that they were put on here just as a, um, informational that that will be coming for the next meeting and that a public hearing has been scheduled for the zoning boundary change.
Okay. Do we have any other correspondence?
Uh, yeah, I received a letter addressed to me at the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning, seven Fan Hill Road, from Angle, Angle Commercial LLC, uh, saying happy new year and a mouse pad. Now, if anyone wants a mouse pad, I don't.
I don't know. It's all yours. Man, it was addressed to you.
Uh, and we have skipped a correspondence. I'd actually like to go back to number two, the zoning planning matters. Although I received a lovely introduction, I was not actually voted in as appointment as an agent of the commission.
Yeah, we should.
Has to be legally then.
Is that a requirement? I wasn't aware. Well, the chair will accept the motion to, uh, accept Kathleen Gallagher.
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to appoint Kathleen Gallagher. Second, and then we get a second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? No discussion, and, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, and the opposed? Okay, the vote is unanimous.
Those were conciled out now. Good luck.
Good night.
Any references from all of you?
It's been two weeks already, right? I think she passed the last guy's record, so.
Yeah.
All right, I have no report. Any of the commissioners have any reports?
No, it's here.
All right.
I do have some items on, uh, staff report from us.
Okay, I didn't use staff reports. Go ahead.
I know. Uh, just to keep the commission up to date, uh, engineering progress reports for Q three were received for one twenty-five Gardner Road and four sixty-seven and four eighty-five Pepper Street. We've also received the monthly engineering progress reports, um, for sixty-four Cambridge and for Independence Drive, but it was August through November. Uh, the town engineer has made a note that we need to be receiving these earlier than several months after the inspections to make sure that there is any corrective action that he would like to review and have done. Um, so we hope that, uh, they will be able to follow that request, um, and bring that in. The other item is, uh, commissioner training. My understanding is that, uh, the commission has completed its training for twenty twenty-three. Um, I would just ask that it's, uh, basically self, um, self-regulated. We do have to make a statement to town council by March first that everybody has completed their training for twenty twenty-three. So I just make the request that you, uh, let, uh, the chairperson know that you have completed it, of which he so gave me a full report, just an email, we'll be able to make that. Um, I also just want to clarify that, uh, this is by annual, so on or after January first, twenty twenty-three, if you were part of the commission, each member of, um, each member of the commission has to do four hours of training, um, and then it's every other year after that. So you do not have to do it for next year, but you will have to do it for the following year, so for twenty twenty-five. Um, so as long as everybody's done it for the twenty twenty-three year, you guys are good for another year.
Now, is that governed within the town or does the state keep record?
We do not have to report to the state. It's self-reporting and self-regulating, but we do have to make a statement to town council by March first every single year.
And Rick has to do it for eight hours.
You ever did eight hours?
Yeah, so I'm good. I'm good, I'm good for like.
It's four, it's, it's four hours.
Good to know.
Yeah, they kept us on for eight miserable. And all I remember is a shark on the roof.
Oh, that guy was annoying.
We are almost.
This is the award section of.
Uh, that's the end of my staff report.
Okay, Kathleen, thank you everyone for, uh, bringing up with the hybrid meeting, and especially Bruno for running those public hearings.
They're rough.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Adjourn.